Council, please come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mandy, please call and roll.
Here.
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 Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
For.
Here.
Again, tonight, if you're attending by telephone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forums and public hearings. I would ask that you would please keep your microphones or telephones on mute until the time at which you would like to speak. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
Move.
Vance, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. At this time, we have an opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward microphone, state name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
For? Branderhorst, De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, public hearing on the authorization of loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city they're under for not to exceed $1,600,000 general obligation capital loan notes. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, tonight's public hearing is in regards for permission to take additional action for an issuance of a not to exceed amount of $1.6 million for geo general obligation capital loan notes. Now these, the bond issue is intended to fund these two street improvements that we have listed up here on the big board. It is important to note that the pricing date for the bonds is scheduled for October 4th on that as well. So, as far as the agenda items that we have this evening, tonight, agenda item E1A is the public hearing on the loan agreement and the maximum not to exceed amount that we're setting this evening. Item E1B is a resolution instituting proceedings for the bond issue and resolution number E3 actually is the approval of official statement for both this proposed bond issue and the next one on the agenda as well, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I believe that concludes staff's presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments received?
No written comments.
Okay, council, comments? Any oral comments from a member of the audience related to this item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to resolution number 6491 entitled Resolution Instituting Proceedings to Take Additional Action for the Issuance of Not to Exceed $1,600,000 in General Obligation Capital Loan Notes. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For? Branderhorst, De Young, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Motion passed. Is work scheduled to be started? I don't remember, we haven't bid yet, or?
Denny?
Denny?
On Prairie.
On Prairie, yeah.
Their, right at the moment, their plan is to pave in the spring. We've been, the contract, we've given permission to do some experimental digging on storm sewer and water relocation, that type of thing. We're actually having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
And maybe some of the pipe work this, this fall, but I think the paving will probably all be in the spring. Because we're gonna pave University Thursday, the rest of it, and then they'll be moving out to 250 in Vermeer. And that, that pushes us towards the end of October and probably the end of the season.
Okay. A public hearing on the authorization of loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city they're under for not to exceed $2.2 million general obligation capital loan notes. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to explain this item. Very similar set of proceedings that we previously discussed this evening. And this one is for a not to exceed amount of $2.2 million of general obligation capital loan notes to fill the city's financial obligation for the Prairie Ridge commercial development area. Very similar to this, we'll actually be receiving bond pricing on October 4th as well. Now, as far as the agenda items associated with it, a public hearing is item E2A that we are conducting this evening. And once again, that is permission to take additional action on the issuance of a not to exceed amount of $2.2 million of capital loan notes. Item E2B is the resolution that actually authorizes the proceedings for the bond issue as well. Now, as far as agenda item E3, we simply have a resolution that approves both of the official statements for both of the proposed bond issues that we are considering this evening. So the takeaway on this, all we're simply doing is setting the not to exceed amount with this proposed bond issue. We'll have pricing on October 4th, and there'll be additional resolutions for council consideration on October 4th, which is at our next council meeting. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Okay, council?
I just wish our pricing was before tomorrow's fifth meeting date.
Probably make a difference, won't it? Anything else, council? Any oral comments from the audience? Yes.
What's money for?
You want to explain?
Yeah, be happy to, Mr. Mayor. On what the bond issue is for is to fulfill the city's financial obligation for the Prairie Ridge commercial development. As part of the development agreement, the developer was required to install a public street along with all public utilities as well. And then in addition, the city has also had incentive payments that are due to entities, namely the Smash Park and the proposed Chick-fil-A for the development as well. So it's a combination between the public infrastructure and the incentive payments that the city is obligated to perform.
Okay? Yeah? So this is all pre-obligated money, we're borrowing money to fill an obligation? Under the development agreement that we entered into with the developers, yes. And it's a TIF, it's a TIF paid project. Tax increment financing will pay these bonds on the new development. We approved it a long time ago. I don't remember how.
It was, it was several months ago, but the mayor is correct. The bond payments will actually be paid by the property taxes generated within the development.
Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Spore.
Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6492 entitled Resolution Instituting Proceedings to Take Additional Action for the Issuance of Not to Exceed $2.2 million general obligation capital loan notes. Nothing to add, I assume, Mike?
That is correct, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
De Young, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
De Young.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6493 entitled Resolution Approving Official Statement for $1,405,000 amount subject to adjustment, general obligation capital loan note series 2022A and $2,085,000 amount subject to adjustment taxable, general obligation capital loan note series 2022B. Assume we don't have anything else.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
Spore.
Hopkins, De Young, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Motion passed. Special event permit request for Drive Thru Coats and Coffee. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And this particular special event permit request coming to us this evening is from Crossroads, and as the mayor has stated, the purpose of this is to host a coat donation event. Now, if council were to approve this event, it would be held on Tuesday, October 18th, from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. Now, the promoter is also requesting as a part of this request to close 13 spaces on the north side of Union Street. So this would just be right abiding up next to the Pellet Community Center, and it's the highlighted area that we have up here on the big board. It is important to note that fee and insurance certificate have been received. In addition, staff is recommending approval of the special event, and as well as the associated resolution which would close the parking spaces for the event as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For? Branderhorst, Spore, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6494 entitled Resolution Temporarily Closing Public Ways or Grounds in Connection with a Special Event Known as Drive Thru Coats and Coffee. I assume nothing to add?
You are correct, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
De Young, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
De Young.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6495 entitled Resolution Entering Into a Contract with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau for the Purpose of Special Traffic Enforcement in the City of Pella. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, the proposed contract that we are considering this evening is with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau. It is important to note that the term of the contract would begin on October 1st of this year. That would extend through September 30th, 2023. Now, overall, as far as the compensation for the contract, it's an amount of $6,450. And as you can see here, the various items that the state would be funding through the contract that we are considering this evening. Very important to note a consideration of this contract. There are no matching funds required on behalf of the City of Pella. And finally, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note also that the city staff is recommending approval. And with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For? Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion?
An obligation, non-financial obligations, would be at the best behalf to meet certain requirements, or is it just dollars?
I'd like to have Chief McShay answer that question, please.
Yeah, good question. So we have to fulfill some audit requests from GTSB, providing hours, work from staff, and provide some figures. We also have to provide kind of proof of purchase for the rep test and the radars and stuff. According to my staff, of course, I've only been here two years, and this is a recurring contract we've done for nearly 20-plus years. It really kind of helps on the equipment side of things, and also being able to kind of network with other agencies where we get together and provide that portion. So it's a, it's a pretty critical part of our public safety plan.
Anything else? All right, we will vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6496 entitled Resolution Ordering Construction of the Pella Fiber Transport Network to IMU and fixing a date for the hearing thereon and taking of bids therefor. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, what this project involves is a joint and transport project between the City of Pella and Indianola Municipal Utilities. What we're proposing to do is construct a joint transport line that would connect both utilities together. It would serve as a backup line for both of our transport needs. And this would be a benefit to both our internet customers, our phone customers, as well as our television customers. And the same would go for IMU on the project as well. Now, as far as, it is important to note that the overall estimated cost of construction is right around $2,355,000. Now, according to the terms of our contract that we do have with IMU on this item, each party is responsible for approximately 50, well, we are responsible for 50% of the total project cost. Now, one of the key takeaways when we're setting the resolution to take additional action, what you're really authorizing staff to do is to seek bids for this project. Now, as a part of the bid process, if council were to approve this resolution, we would conduct a bid letting on this project on October 10th. It is important to note, assuming that we have positive bids on October 10th, that we would be presenting those bids to the Pellet City Council November 1st. And that same night, we'd hopefully be entertaining a construction contract for this project as well. So once again, Mr. Mayor, in summary, all we're simply doing is authorizing the city staff to take any and all necessary action to seek bids for this project. In addition, we're authorizing a public hearing to be held on November 1st this year for this project. So, if all goes well, we can approve a contract on November 1st. Substantial completion for this project is scheduled on September of 2023. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For? Hopkins? And De Young? Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number 1016 entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Amending Sections 165.32 Off-Street Parking for the Purpose of Exempting Converted Residential Units From Being Required to Provide Off-Street Parking in the Central Business District. And this is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Since we are in the second reading tonight, we have a very brief presentation on this item. In summary, what this proposed ordinance would do would exempt converted residential units in the Central Business District from their requirement to provide off-street parking for the newly converted residential units. So this would be an existing business building in the Central Business District that may be used for commercial purposes, being converted on the second floor or above for residential purposes. They would not have to provide required off-street parking. However, it is important to note that newly built residential units in the Central Business District, so these would be new buildings in the Central Business District, would still be required to provide off-street parking in the Central Business District. Now, summary, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission and was previously approved by the commission as well. And with that, that concludes the staff presentation this evening. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
De Young, Hopkins, discussion?
This is applied to residential only, not mixed use?
Yeah, correct, correct, Councilmember Carlstone, residential only.
Okay. So we will vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
De Young.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And I'll do my same repetitive thing, asking to waive the third reading, mainly because P&amp;Z has went through it without any opposition at all, and now we've had two hearings without any opposition. So, to save Mandy some typing that next time, I think it's appropriate to waive the third reading. So I'll make that motion.
I'll say support. Vance, Hopkins, a motion to waive the third reading. This ordinance change, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to place on the third and final reading?
Spore.
De Young, Spore. The motion is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
De Young.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 1017 entitled Ordinance Approving Moratorium on the Issuance of Building Permits for Single Family and Two-Family Residential Homes Within Commercially Zoned District in the Oskaloosa Street Corridor. This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, this is the second reading on ordinance that would provide a moratorium on the issuance of single and two-family residential building permits in commercially zoned districts on Oskaloosa Street. So basically, the geographical area of this ordinance extends from Main Street, Main Street, Oskaloosa Street intersection, all the way out to the Oskaloosa Street 240th intersection. And up on our map, up here on the big board, it's the yellow highlighted area would be the properties that would be subject to this ordinance. So it's any commercial property which abuts Oskaloosa Street on this geographical area that extends from the intersection of Main Street and Oskaloosa Street, all the way out to Oskaloosa Street 240th Avenue. Now, as far as the term of the moratorium, it would remain in place until the end of 2023 or until council group adopts zoning changes to implement an economic development plan for the corridor, whichever would occur first. And in summary, Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance. And with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Branderhorst, De Young, any discussion? All right. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading?
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, a motion made supported to waive the third reading? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Branderhorst, De Young, motion to adopt ordinance number 1017, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Motion passed. Abstract Bill Number 2111, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Branderhorst, Spore, any discussion or questions? Seem like a smaller list this time than normal. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Council, any, any member have anything you want to bring before us this evening?
I noticed they got the soil borings done in the proposed park down there on Oskaloosa Street. That's been a long time coming.
When do we expect the report?
In the, in the next three, four weeks.
Anything else?
A couple of things I wanted to bring up. One of it, just a couple reflections on the vote that was held last week. I think it was a 28% turnout, which is an absolute huge turnout for a vote, vote like this. It, I was looking at Oskaloosa, it was a hotel motel tax vote, which is a similar ballot issue. And they had that last spring, and they had a 2.5% turnout. 182 people voted, and we had 2,200. Now, part of that, this was a contested issue, I would say. You know, you had a lot of things going out. There's a lot of, as I look on it, there's a lot of people asking good, solid questions. A little bit of the anti-everything crowd came out, and that kind of vamped the rhetoric up a little bit and made some statements. But as I reflected on that, I don't think voters have ever had on a ballot issue able to see two sides of every issue. I mean, both in print and in social media. So every voter did have the chance on the issue that's kind of arcane to weigh it all out. So I, I think that was a rare thing that happens in a, in a vote like this. So, so I was, as I reflected on that, that was good. I think that that all, all came through that way. I particularly wanted to acknowledge a couple of groups, Pace, they put stuff out there a lot. And I appreciated them replaying the, the presentation you did two weeks ago. And then also appreciated the Friends of the Community Center supporting the, the issue as, as well. So I, I think those were good groups to be involved. That's just the Sunday school picnic. We've got the hard work ahead of us now on, on, on this, particularly as we talked about rising rates and tough supply issues and labor costs. I think as we look at those projects, it's gonna be quite a bit of work yet as, as we go forward. So I think we have to be prepared to spend a lot of work sessions in, in getting to that point. And Mike's probably already reaching the crowd there, so. Second issue I wanted to mention, probably even more important than the other one. I don't know how many people saw the Register of Sunday headlines, "Will an ambulance get to you in time?" Great, I imagine you have read that?
I have not, I heard about it.
Okay, so, great article. If you folks have a chance to find this, it's a one of two parts. I don't know when the next part is gonna be. Three pages of stuff, talked about our friends in Grinnell on the issues that we faced, and about possibly two deaths that may have happened because of a house explosion. Because the one ambulance there was on a, on a transport call. So, this is something that I think our legislator's gonna have to face on this whole essential services deal. And I, I think all of us, if we, if you get a chance to chat with our legislator, do that. And if you get a chance to read this article, it's, it's, it's an unbelievably good article about the signs, the times we have for emergency services here, so.
They didn't mention Pella at all.
No.
After we just went through all that to take over the handle. It was a good article.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, council? All right, opportunity for anyone from the public to address council with an issue. If you want to do that, I would ask that you step forward microphone, state your name and address, and write it in your comments. Three minutes?
My name is John Butler. I live at 406 Franklin Street. And I think 28% of the people that are allowed to vote in this town is absolutely horrendous. And because the vote was about 58%, 44% or something in there, 56, 44, And because the vote was about 58%, 44% or something in there, 56, 44, that means the future of this process was decided by about 80% of eligible voters in town. It's terrible. It's terrible. I think it's terrible. It's a lack, when the right, we have this right to vote, and it has been paid for by patriots down through the centuries, and wars. And we are so fortunate to have this right to vote, and it's ignored. It's terrible. It's terrible. Now, another, I didn't even get into that, what I came up here to talk about was the fact that before the vote, we're going to rehash the vote a little bit. I kept hearing that 50% of the new revenue to be used for infrastructure, which, and it was in writing, it was 50% of the vote. And Mr. Nardine concurred with that, the mayor said it, I heard him say it, in his speech two weeks ago, I heard, I think I heard it on the radio. Finally, and I kept looking at my ballot, and I said, it doesn't say that on my ballot, it's not on the ballot. But, it's in the official record of Marion County Express. This is the paper record, so now we have it in writing that, yeah, 50% of the vote of infrastructure. It's also in the newsletter that the mayor sent out. He said, "The City of Pella intends to use approximately 50% of the funds for infrastructure and road improvements." That's fine, that's great. Approximately, that's fine, that's good enough with that kind of money. So, it would have been so much easier, we would have not had all this contention, and all this angst, and all this elevated blood pressure, and people doing name-calling even. Name-calling is the lowest form of criticism. It's a lack of intelligence to use name-calling in a discussion. So, the other thing that was in the, in the paper was that a statement, now this wasn't attributed to anybody, but it says, "Beyond making some drawings and estimates, the council has not approved anything related to the REC Center." Well, there's a benefit of being at these meetings, because on July 19th, Resolution 6471 approved hiring Shyne Habberly to do work on the REC Center. What are we supposed to think? What are we supposed to think? It's right there. We're, we, yeah, we haven't sent them any money yet, because we don't know how much to send them. But, we are engaged, we have a contract, we're going forward, and for the, somebody got it wrong in the paper, I don't know who, doesn't matter, it's in the paper. So, the other thing that really set me off, or at least I didn't, I responded to it, I had a voter in town said, oh, he said, "I voted for it. I trust the mayor." Trust is a valuable thing. I trust you too. I've only been in town a year and a half, everybody has a clean slate with me. He said, "The mayor is a good guy, he's honest, he's on the board of a church, church board." You know what I said to him? Why has the mayor not stood up against child pornography in our library?
Anyone else? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Hopkins, DeYoung, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Dan Strach?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are adjourned, thank you.